Welcome to the November fifteenth Board of Education meeting. I ask you to stand for the salute at the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please note the marked emergency exits in the locations EED, Narcan, and EpiPen. Okay, I need a motion for the order of agenda.
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passed. Clerks report, Marian.
The resolved by the Board of Education accepts minutes of the business meeting held October 11th, 2022.
Okay, I need a motion.
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Approval of minutes?
The resolved, the Board of Education accepts minutes of the special meeting held November 7th, 2022.
Okay, any motion?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, public comment. Speakers will be recognized who wish to address the board on agenda items only. Okay. Now comes the fun part, the student of the month. And we will begin with Mr. Meyer.
Thank you, Ms. Joslin. All right, cannot wait to introduce you to this young man, but first I'd like to ask his teachers, Ms. Rizio, Ms. DeViti, please come on up. It is our pleasure to welcome our student of the month, Harrison Gonzalez. Harrison, come on up. Harrison is a smart, dependable, and respectful boy. His work ethic is amazing, and he has shown amazing responsibility in third grade. We can always count on Harrison to participate no matter what the activity is, and he's always ready to learn. Harrison is also extremely helpful. He's a great team player and is always willing to help classmates whatever they need. Harrison is always showing kindness inside the classroom and is a great friend to his classmates. Harrison's favorite activity is math. He loves doing addition and subtraction. Harrison's favorite special class is technology. He looks forward to going to Mrs. Alberti's class to play fun computer games. Harrison's favorite memory so far from third grade has been meeting his new teachers and making new friends. Outside of school, Harrison loves to go to the beach. He enjoys playing in the sand and with his toys. One of his favorite activities is swimming in both the ocean and the pool. When Harrison is not swimming or spending time at the beach, he loves to play Mario on his Nintendo Switch. You can pick Harrison out of a crowd by his matching Mario backpack, lunchbox, and Mario T-shirt. At home, Harrison plays the role of big brother. Harrison has three younger brothers that are five and two-year-olds and a new baby brother that was born this past October. Harrison is a reliable and supportive big brother that continues to set a good example every day for his younger brothers. When Harrison grows up, he wants to be a police officer, to protect people, and help the Hampton Bays community. We believe Harrison's problem-solving skills and hard-working attitude will be a major asset to the police force one day. Harrison is a pleasure to have in our school, and he adds so much enthusiasm to whatever activities we are doing. A role model inside and outside of the school. We're truly honored and proud to have Harrison in our grade this year. Thank you, Harrison, for being such a wonderful young man. We cannot wait to see all the great things you accomplish in the future. We're proud to have nominated Harrison Gonzalez for October's student of the month. There's no one who deserves it more. Congratulations, Harrison.
Thank you, Mr. Meyer. And congratulations, Harrison. Next up, we have Mr. Shug for the middle school.
Allow me to introduce Hampton Bays Middle School's student of the month for October, eighth grader Santiago Cortez Molina. Santiago is a member of the ACC team, and this is what Santi's teacher team had to say about him. Santiago has been with our team for two years now as a seventh grader and eighth grader. We have seen such amazing growth in Santi's abilities and focus. Throughout his time with us, he has shown us how dedicated he is to learning through the questions he asks, the work he is willing to do, and the extra time he puts in after school to work with teachers to learn even more. He demonstrates kindness and is exceptional when working with other students in groups. He has matured so much, and we're very proud of him, from the way he supports himself to the way he looks out for others. Santiago is a bright and rising student leader. Santi, what he learns in his living environment regions course. He enjoys using the microscope to explore and discover new things themselves. He recommends we all read the I Survived series, especially the books about sharks and historical events. His motto for any new middle school student is never give up. But there's so much more to Santiago, and I'd like to try to capture what it is that makes such a uniquely special selection for a student of the month. First, a message from the Director of Ambulatory Services at Stony Brook University from May 2021. Santiago helped us in the vaccination pod. He was amazing and such a huge help to us. Please send him special thanks from the Southampton Hospital team for his amazing work that he did. He ran outside operations all on his own, lol, of course, with adult supervision, of course, until our last patient arrived while continually adding paper to clipboards as needed. It was heartwarming to see a child of his age so dedicated to helping the community. We really wanted him to be acknowledged for this at the school. This positive impression that Santi made led to get more involved in the Southampton Police Department's Explorer Program. So the department invited a then eleven-year-old Santi in for an interview. They weren't quite sure what they were going to be able to do for him because of his age. The Explorer Program is typically for older kids. However, officers reported, he showed up in a suit and absolutely aced the interview, portraying himself in a manner beyond his years and with maturity greater than many of the older kids in the program. When he, when he was asked what made him think he could handle the program, usually for older students, he simply said, because I never give up. Officers on the interview panel were blown away by him and were excited for him to be a part of the program and expressed they were willing to do anything they could to support his success. Fast forward to August 2021. Santi continued to impress, now with a lieutenant, who gave an update on how wonderful Santi had been in the Explorer Program. This young participated in shop with a cop, taking a family on his own to shop with younger kids in the family. He kept track of the money spent and presented himself as a leader. The department said he is an amazing person and he makes them proud. I share all of this because, first of all, we're proud of you, Santi, both in and out of the classroom and in and out of the middle school. You remind us to look for the good in kids and see their potential. We can't wait to see where your experiences take you next and with your mindset for leadership, service, hard work, and humility. So when I asked you in our interview, what are you involved in beyond the school day? You simply told me you were excited to get more involved with the Police Explorers Program. You told me the program was for four to twenty-one-year-olds and that you were left, they left, they let you into the age of eleven because they made an exception for you. You told me now at the age of thirteen, you were hopeful to take on more responsibility and to teach people in a sergeant position in the Explorers. And you told me someday you wanted to go to college, become a police officer, maybe on the East End or the Ford Authority, like your older cousin. What you say is how much of a positive role model you are in the community with adults and children because of your commitment to leadership and service. But why would you say any of this, Santi? Well, first of all, you're humble, and second of all, you're a middle school kid. Middle kids don't give answers like that. And rather than talk about what you've accomplished, Santi, you're busy doing the work, making difference in people's lives in our HB community. So thanks for that reminder, Santi. Congratulations on this honor tonight. Be proud of yourself, and we look forward to more to come in your bright future as a difference maker in the HB community. Congratulations.
Thank Mr. Shug, and congratulations, Santiago. Next up for the high school, we have Mr. Morgan.
Thank you, Mr. Joslin. It is my absolute pleasure to announce that the October student of the month for Hampton Bays High School is Sophia Solano Cruz. I'd consider happenstance, but the morning I spoke with Sophia to inform her about this accomplishment, she was actually already in my office seeking senior privileges. I told her before we spoke about those privileges, there was something else we needed to address. She was selected as our October student of the month, and let me tell you, the look on her face was absolutely priceless. When speaking with Sophia, she shared a story with me that I would like to hear with you tonight. Sophia told me that this has been a goal of hers since she was seven years old. Sophia entered the Hampton Bays School District in just second grade, and she has always wanted to be the student of the month and have her name displayed on the school's marquee. Well, Sophia, hard work pays off. Sophia is currently enrolled in AP Language, AP French, AP Bio, Science Research, and College Economics. Due to the potential number of college credits Sophia is earning this year, we are not talking about a high school senior, but in reality, Sophia is already a college freshman. Some valuable lessons Sophia shared with me are that service is so important and that putting others before yourself is a better way to live. Sophia mentioned to me that impacting someone's life in a positive way is a goal we should all have for ourselves. This is a student that just doesn't talk the talk, she walks the walk. She is currently the president of the Leo Club and was vice president last year. She co-founded Friends in Faith, previously known as the Bible Club, and has helped raise awareness about the club, its goals, helps lead meetings both English and Spanish every Friday in room 24C with Ms. Rozzi and Ms. Strecker. Sophia is also very active in the Hampton Bays and Southampton Town communities. She has chaired the Youth Advisory Council for the past two years, has participated in food drives, pancake breakfast, and raids for community members. One event on Sophia's calendar that she spoke about is Extreme Rec Day at SYS, where she told me that she was able to provide childcare for local families on Veterans Day. She has also served as a member of the Teen Advisory Board at the Hampton Bays Library and has also volunteered with the Southampton Animal Shelter. From senior citizens to children to pets, Sophia has time to help them all. Her post-high school plans include majoring in English, specifically adolescent education at SUNY Stony Brook, because she wants to be a high school English teacher. Sophia said that English is a class where you're taught how to think, not what to think, and she felt her English classes have helped her find a way to express herself. According to Sophia, high school is a very vulnerable time for a lot of people, and the most impactful conversations she has had have all happened in English classes. In our conversation, Sophia reflected on some advice she would like to give to Hampton Bays youngsters. Try as hard as you can. Some things are going to be really tough, but there's always a way around it. You just have to try your best. Sophia told me she would like to thank Ms. Defritus for nominating her for this award. Sophia also looks very highly of her family, and she would not be anywhere without her parents. She cannot thank you enough for everything that you have done for her. Once again, congratulations, Sophia Solano Cruz, our October Hampton Bays student of the month.
Thank you, Ms. Morgan, and congratulations, Sophia. Next up, we have a special presentation tonight by Mr. Richard, and it's the National Honor Society induction of two very special students.
Good evening. I'd first like to thank Mr. Clemmenson and the Board of Education for inviting the National Honor Society this evening. Tonight, we will formally recognize two students who have earned their position to be inducted as new members of our NHS chapter. According to the selection procedures outlined in the Honor Society handbook, the voting members of the faculty council select students who demonstrate outstanding performance in all four criteria of scholarship, leadership, service, and character. These students are to be commended for their hard work in the HB community. On behalf of the faculty at Hampton Bays High School, I proudly present these elite and prestigious representatives from our Hampton Bays schools. It is at this time that we proclaim to all in attendance that membership in the Hampton Bays chapter of the National Honor Society has been earned by these candidates through this effective demonstration of the four qualities that serve as standards for the society. We will now begin with the official induction of all new members. I invite Christian Cruz and April Feliciano to step forward next to me to receive your token of membership and sign the official chapter. Okay, we begin with Christian Cruz. Christian has held the presidential honor roll for all quarters of his high school career while maintaining a high GPA and participating in sports. He has consistently maintained a high GPA during remote, non-remote learning. In addition, Christian has been recognized with placement medals in sports and was nominated student of the month. Taking as many advanced classes as possible, Christian Cruz is an AP scholar with honors. Next up, we have April Feliciano. Some important accomplishments during April's high school career are being a part of TRIAM, earning high honors and presidential honor roll, attending a meeting with the American League of Women, and serving as a peer educator while participating in No Place for Hate. In each of these activities, April pushed herself and was able to help others. I invite Mr. Richard up to lead the pledge of new members.
All right, thank you, Ms. Rohan, and congratulations, Christian and April. At this time, we're going to recite the National Honor Society pledge. I must uphold the high purposes of the National Honor Society, to which I have been selected. I will be true to the principles for which it stands and will maintain and encourage the high standards of scholarship, leadership, service, and character. Service and character. Congratulations.
I apologize for not introducing Ms. Rohan, and I thank her for the presentation tonight. And congratulations to Christian and April, and thank you, Mr. Richard. Right now, we will take a short break, and you can take pictures and be with your families, and we'll be back in about five minutes. I have Mr. Lars Clemmenson with the superintendent's report.
Next on the agenda clears the room.
Yes.
Good evening, everybody. If you, let's make sure this is on. So we are back in full swing. We are wrapping up. We wrapped up the first marking period of the 22-23 school year, and really, events are back in full swing. And I had said as we ended the school year and started this new one that each month I would put up facts and figures related to COVID-19. The fact of the matter is, it's really just become a standard part of our operation and our lives. We're averaging about case to two cases a day. Sometimes they're higher, sometimes they're lower, but the community continues to just be remarkable in terms of monitoring for symptoms, staying out. in terms of monitoring for symptoms, staying out, testing. And when testing, you go home. And then our instructional plan is such that kids are getting caught up and extra help sessions exist. So I've stopped including them on the slides, but under Health and Safety on our website is our daily dashboard. So we just continue to update that each day with counts of COVID. And it's great that we anticipated this reality, that it's something we live with, it's something we're cautious about. We still have many, many at-home tests, and we'll make those available to anybody, staff or students or families who need them, because they're better out in the community in the medicine cabinet for that morning you wake up, you're not feeling so great. You make that double check and make sure everything's fine. So no slides on COVID-19 tonight. You'll see enrollment as we get into the school year. I don't even put September's column in there because it's only the first week of school, and we still are in great flux at that point. From October to November, you can see we did decline a little bit, nine students. So we're probably in our... This is where we'll live, with the exception of maybe ones or twos coming in or out. We tend to see another... I won't call it a surge, but an increase in enrollment as we get towards the later months of the winter, January and February, and we'll see if that bears out as well. But enrollment in November means a couple of things. And one of the resolutions you'll vote on tonight is the board calendar that Larry will mention in his report. But just as soon as we start the school year, we're already looking towards the next budget as we're looking at enrollment. And so I go down the hallway, and that's what Larry's talking about. And then I go down the hallway a little further, and the registrar's talking about kindergarten roundup and kindergarten screening and Ms. Colhane saying, "Hold on, I've just got my kids." Trying to make them five-year-old students. We're already looking to that next class that's coming in and getting the word out. That begins in February. So next week's Thanksgiving, it's practically Hocken Christmas, which means it's January, which means it's commencement. So that's how fast the school year goes. So with enrollment up right now in November, it means we're starting to already plan for the next year. A quick few bullet items I want to mention to you tonight, members. We did change our operations on Election Day to be fully remote. It turns out that it's a good test of our system as I wake up and I look on Facebook and see that a good portion of the community doesn't have Wi-Fi because it was windy the night before. And so adjusted teachers... If we've learned nothing else as educators, it's to bend like the willow over the past two years, you know, have our plan but be agile. And so we quickly got the message out that the libraries in school were open for kids who absolutely had no internet but had the means to get her. The cafeteria was open, so we had some food for them. Not many took us up on that. Parents used phones as hotspots, juggled. But then internet service was restored not too late into the morning. So Google classrooms were updated. Google classrooms were a rarity on March 13th, 2020. But by March 18th, 2020, the Google Classroom is the must-have and keeps everybody connected. But it was a good test of our system. It was a busy Election Day, so campus was busy, and it was the right operational move, I think. So thank you for supporting that. See a few pictures along the bottom. We took the junior class, about 50% of junior class, to Washington, DC. Those look like postcard pictures because it was three beautiful days down there. Couldn't have asked for better weather. We parked the bus on Thursday and didn't see it until Saturday because we just walked everywhere, 20,000-plus steps a day. The kids got to experience a real tremendous amount of what Washington, DC has to offer. And then the University of Delaware on the way home right up I-95. Next year, I plan for the same type of trip, a couple of tweaks. We learned a few things doing this on our own. In the past, we'd used a tour company. Not doing so is able to bring the... We've done it so much that in-house staff and teachers were able to build this trip, help mitigate the cost. The investment that was made in the general fund of the budget in May really brought that cost down for kids as a benchmark field trip. So the cost for kids was $200 to have experience for three days. And proportionally, I would hope to keep that a priority in the 23-24 budget as we start to get the pencil to paper. We were getting to a point where the class trip was representative of about a third of the class. But the fact that we've moved from a third to half... I don't know that we'll ever get to 100 because kids have conflicts in activities outside of school. Some families are going to make the decision that a class trip outstate is in something that they're going to do, and that's fine as well. But the more we can move barriers to get that number up so that there are... That financial barriers are not a reason a kid couldn't go on the trip, the better, I think. So looking forward to redoing this again next year and just getting better and more efficient at it and welcoming more kids as well. We unpacked that suitcase in the following week, headed up to Syracuse to the New York State School Boards Convention where Mr. Springer and I had the opportunity to present the Hospitality Academy at Hampton Bay's. In addition, it was three days of learning and conferences, opportunity for our board members to engage with other board members from around the region and around the state as well. Congratulations to our middle school cross-country field hockey and varsity tennis teams, who were all in the fall season by Section 11, announced as sportsmanship teams today. So that coaches Arado, Fasini, and Carey. So congratulations to them and their girls as well. And just a note of congratulations and celebration to the Hampton Bay's volleyball program, who last week had a tough loss and an exciting game today for Blue Point in the Suffolk County Section 11 Volleyball Finals at Hop Hawk High School. It was well-attended. It was an exciting run. And throughout the season was packed. 60 kids in the middle school came out for volleyball at the eighth-grade level. So there's a lot of excitement for the future in volleyball. There's a lot of excitement for the past of volleyball, too, because on November 4th, coaches... Both Coachopolises, Coach Vitapali, hosted the first, the inaugural Alumni Volleyball Game. So it was fun on Saturday to see these alums dating back to the early 1990s come into the gym to see if they still have it against our varsity teams. And they celebrated afterwards here in the cafeteria with an intergenerational team dinner. So it was a really exciting Saturday. But these bullet points show you that we are just back in full force as a school district. Last week, we celebrated Veterans Day and brought back our Veterans Flag Ceremony, which had been temporarily suspended through COVID. And so we recognized Mr. Bill Jones of Southampton, a veteran who is active in both Hampton Bay's and Southampton communities as our 75th Flag Ceremony Veteran. We'll look forward to doing this again. We were able to present the flag that had flown at Veterans Flagpole for the last three years nearly to Eric Blum. We had been doing it monthly, remember, but February 2020 was the last Veterans Flag Ceremony. So it was great to be back. The fourth graders took us through that program. World Kindness Day was recognized the last few days at Hampton Bay's. All three schools, actually. So you see a little picture. The elementary school was plastered with Post-it notes of kids writing kind notes to one another. So you didn't have to reach far to get a note of encouragement or kindness. Today, you saw kindness shirts all through Hampton Bay's Elementary School as well. So just a reminder for treating people with kindness and warmth throughout the day, every day. Hampton Bay's Middle School, similar to what we have out here in the hallway for our No Place for Hate wall. Hampton Bay's Middle School joined in kids signing a pledge to be accepting, tolerant, and have a commitment to justice and fairness. As Hampton Bay's Middle School was also designated as a No Place for Hate school. So throughout the year, a number of school-wide activities are done with faculty and staff to promote tolerance, justice, fairness, acceptance, diversity, anti-bullying, and those are important designations that we earned nationally last year from the Anti-Defamation League, both at the high school and the middle school level. Parent-teacher conferences take place now through December 1st. Early dismissals next week at Hampton Bay's Elementary School, Monday and Tuesday. The middle school on Tuesday, and then the high school after Thanksgiving. Tonight, Larry, I'll talk to you about the budget calendar adoption, which is in your packet. And then I'll also flag in the agenda that there's a number of policy amendments, policy additions, with memos attached to what those are all about. And I can answer any questions now or as they sit in what we call first-reading status from now until the December meeting. When they'll be... If there are no recommended changes or the will of the board changes, they'll be voted and adopted that night for full adoption implementation at the December board meeting. That's it for the written report. Is there... Are there any questions I can answer from the board?
No.
Okay. Thank you. Happy Thanksgiving.
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Clemmenson. Up next, we have Mr. Larry Luce with a business report.
Thank you, Mr. Jazlin. Just a couple of things. Tonight, the board is asked to approve the new IRS limit for flexible health spending accounts to $3,050 per year. The old limit was $2,750 per year. I want to make clear this is not an increase in benefits for employees or any additional cost to taxpayers. This is simply flexible health spending account allows employees to take up $350 of their own gross salary and use it in a way that sets it aside for certain out-of-pocket health costs. No change to taxpayers, just a change for employees and how they use their own money. Our external audit is finalized and is now available and on our website. Look under Departments, Finance and Budget, and then Financial Documents. And you can see this past audit from June 2022, as well as there's an archive section where you can see audits from the last five or six years, all there. Our corrective action plan, our CAP, will be discussed and approved at the next board meeting. We have begun our administrative review process with the Child Nutrition Management Service Office of State Education Department. It's basically another audit. It's just an audit of our cafeteria services and are we following all the state and federal rules and regulations for serving meals under the National School Lunch Program? Probably be ongoing most of the year because it begins with just filling out paperwork, and then they ask for more things, and they come visit. We'll finish talking about it in May sometime. Also, on the agenda for tonight is the board asked to approve an agreement with Rite Aid Pharmacy. This is to provide flu vaccines for staff. Most of it's covered by insurance, except for a couple, but primarily all covered by insurance and taken care of. And last but not least, as Mr. Clemmenson had mentioned, the budget calendar for 2023-2024 school year. Coming fast, we begin the budget process in the next weeks, and we'll get into our first budget workshop after the holidays in January of '23.
Thank you, Mr. Luce. Okay. Right now, I'm asking for a consent motion for items 4A to 4D.
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Next, I'm asking for a motion for 5A, Student Service.
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Personnel, I'm asking for a consent motion for 6A through 6J.
Motion.
A second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Section 7 of Education, I'm asking for a consent motion for 7A through 7F.
Before you do that, I just want to flag a meeting date change from the regular... We try to have regular business meetings, the second Tuesday of every month. It's reliable for the board, the staff, and also the community. But sometimes things happen that push us off that counter. Tuesday, the February meeting will be moved from February 14th to Tuesday, February 7th, if you accept that resolution tonight.
Okay. I have a motion with the change of the February meeting from February 14th to February 7th.
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes.
And you can consent 7. Do a full consent.
Oh, full consent for 7. Oh, that's right. And a full consent for 7A through 7F now.
Motion.
And second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Motion passes. And we are now... Public comment. Persons may address the Board of Education on any matters of interest or concern. The Board President will recognize all speakers. Please identify yourself, your town, and the topic of which you will be speaking. Time limits may be imposed based upon agenda needs.
Speak up, Mark. Just kidding.
All right. At this point, make a motion that we adjourn the meeting.
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Meeting's adjourned. Thank you very much, everybody, for participating and listening to the meeting tonight. Have a good night.